Ms. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Donner.
Present.
Mr. Hosang.
Here.
Ms. Hunley.
Here.
Mr. Riffle.
Present.
Mrs. Ortego.
Here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye. All right, I will hand it over to Dr. Heron to begin the discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased this evening to start to bring you information to develop next year's budget. And Ms. Ewing and several other staff members are going to take you through parts of the presentation this evening. We're delighted that last week we got the Calc tool and we were able to translate the governor's budget into what that means for us. And that will be part of the presentation this evening. Ms. Ewing, right over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. As Dr. Heron mentioned, we will be presenting and discussing preliminary information related to the fiscal year 26 operating budget. And as we go through the presentation, other members from the senior leadership team will be joining us in sharing information from their respective areas. This is an overview of the items we will be reviewing this afternoon, which include background information related to the requirements for developing the budget, and a brief overview of the budget process to date, historical enrollment information, as well as a projection for next year, providing an overview of state revenue based on the governor's budget and mandatory and essential operating expenditure increases. Then we'll summarize everything that we present to you this afternoon and go over next steps. There are a couple of code, state code sections that apply to school divisions. The first one is Code Section 15.2-2503, Time for Preparation and Approval of Budget and Contents. This code section requires that on or before April 1st of each year, we must approve a budget of need to pass on to our governing bodies, both Williamsburg and James City County. The second state code section, 22.1-92, Estimate of Monies Needed for the Public Schools, requires the superintendent, with the approval of the school board, to provide an estimate of the amount of money that is considered to be needed to support the public schools in the division, and that the budget must be set up by each major classification or category that has been prescribed by the Board of Education. We use our strategic plan's priorities to guide the development of the budget to ensure that the budget aligns with the goals of our strategic plan, and that it supports the needs and goals of the school division, taking into consideration the input of our stakeholders. We will show the alignment with the goals of Elevate 28 for the budget increases at our next budget work session on January 21st. In the October-November timeframe, we began collecting input from each school principal and each department administrator for the operating budget. At that time, they entered their requests into our financial system, and we then met with departments individually to discuss their requests and determine their needs. In December, we began discussing and evaluating the call center requests with the superintendent's senior leadership team to ensure that what we present to you is indicative of need. This process will continue throughout this month as we will share additional information with you at the next budget work session on January 21st. We are presenting the items that were determined to be necessary to the division so that we may gather your opinion as to how those needs should be prioritized into a final budget request. The Local Composite Index, or LCI, is the state's measurement of each locality's ability to pay for public education. The formula takes into consideration the changes in property values and taxes, the local income and retail sales, and compares it to that for the entire state. Each locality's index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide local share of 45% and an overall state share of 55%. Much of our funding is derived from a per pupil cost multiplied by one minus the composite index. So the lower the composite index results in more state funding, while a higher composite index would result in less state funding. The LCI is supposed to be an indicator of the wealth of the locality. If it goes up, the locality is deemed to have increased wealth and will be able to provide additional funding to support its programs. The maximum LCI is .8. The LCI is updated at the start of each biennium, and since our school division serves two localities, we have two LCIs. The city of Williamsburg's is .7426, and James City County's is .5403 for the current biennium. This chart is a historical view of the local composite index starting in 2007, eight through 25, 26. Williamsburg was consistently at the highest LCI of .8 until 1718, when it started decreasing gradually each year and is starting to rise with the new biennium. James City County's LCI has been more volatile through the years, declining the past two bienniums and beginning to rise again with the new biennium. This chart shows a comparison of our LCI with divisions here on the peninsula, as well as three of the larger Region Two divisions on the south side. As you can see, Williamsburg and James City County have the highest LCI of any locality in our area. Unfortunately, that means fewer state dollars for our schools and an increased dependence on our local funding partners. We have been very fortunate to have strong support for education from our funding partners over the years. Enrollment is based on our September 30th student count each year. This is a historical look at our enrollment from fiscal year 2017 until now. We saw a decline in enrollment in fiscal year 21 to 10,858 due to the pandemic and have almost reached the pre-pandemic enrollment level with current enrollment of 11,0379. Each year, Future Think prepares 10-year enrollment projections based on our September 30th enrollment information. These projections include a low, moderate, most likely, and high projection. Next year's projection ranges from a low of 11,345 to a high of 11,833. For many years, we used the low projection to develop our operating budget, but since COVID, we've been developing our budget based on the current year enrollment and plan to continue doing so for the fiscal year 26 budget cycle. And as a reminder, these enrollment numbers do not include preschool students, which total approximately 395 each year. Moving on to revenue, this will be a first look at our estimated state revenue based on Governor Yonkin's budget amendments for the 24, 26 biennium. This is all preliminary information that could change based on action by the General Assembly. This table shows a comparison of our state revenue based on Governor Yonkin's budget amendments compared to our fiscal year 25 budget. This includes the most recent estimates of sales tax revenue dedicated to public education. The estimates include both the 1% and the 1/8% portion that are appropriated for distribution to school divisions based on school age population. It is projected that we will see an increase of 966,000 in fiscal year 26 related to sales tax. Standards of Quality, or SOQ, funds have been updated based on the latest actual ABM and Fall Membership data. Our SOQ funding is estimated to increase by approximately 201,000. Incentive programs will see an increase of approximately 1.4 million. This is primarily related to funding for a 3% compensation supplement effective on July 1st, 2025, as well as a supplemental general fund payment from the state in lieu of the food and hygiene tax. Projected lottery amounts are being used to fund the state's share of various programs, such as the Infrastructure and Operations Per Pupil Fund, Early Reading Intervention, K3 Primary Class Size Reduction, and SOL Algebra Readiness. We are estimating a decrease of approximately 198,000 in this area as compared to our fiscal year 25 budget. This is primarily related to the Infrastructure and Operations Per Pupil allocation for us. Overall, we are looking at a total increase in state funding of approximately 2.4 million, or 1.3% over our current fiscal year 25 budget. Now we'll take a look at compensation. The current biennium budget provides a 3% salary increase for funded SOQ instructional and support positions. For WJCC, every 1% of salary increase costs the division approximately 1.3 million. This includes the associated benefits. So a 3% increase will cost 3.9 million. From the information that Bolton shared at the December meeting from the compensation study, this table shows a preliminary implementation cost summary for their recommended changes. These recommended changes would cost a total of 7.6 million. 1.7 million for the combining of our support and admin scales into a general range scale, and 5.9 million for the teacher scale. This information from Bolton's report shows our lack of competitiveness with our peers across our teacher scales. We range from 2.7% to 8.4% behind our peers. Administration is currently working with Bolton to develop a plan to implement the recommendations from the compensation study, which we expect to be a multi-year plan. We will share specific recommendations at the next budget work session. Mr. Baker will now share information regarding compensation and WJCC vacancy trends.
Good afternoon. We wanted to begin with some information on the starting salary of our closest competitors for teacher talent. This graph shows our current BA or bachelor's degree teachers, which is on the left of each grouping, and then shows the impact of a 3% raise. For the current school year, we rank fourth out of six for our bachelor's degree entry level earning $54,000. In this example, those teachers could move up to $55,620 with a 3% increase. Similarly, we wanted to show the impact of a 3% raise on the master's degree teachers. For the current school year, our master's degree entry level teacher earns $55,826, which is five out of six for our closest competitors. In this example, those teachers could move to $57,500 with a 3% raise. We shared these two slides with you as a reminder where we rank with our key competitors as we prepare to hire and retain teachers for the upcoming year. We continue to see a trend with teachers resigning and retiring during the school year. Our goal is always to be 100% staffed, and traditionally, we have hit that mark or come very close. This year, we have seen an increase in our teacher vacancies each month with a low of six in September to 10 in December, and as of today, it'll be also 10. Hiring is not currently keeping pace with resignations and retirements. Since September, we've had hired 14 teachers, but we've had 17 resign or retire. Generally, teachers resign or retire at the end of the school year, but now the hiring season never stops, and it's creating challenges in our classrooms. After declining during the first part of the pandemic, the number of teachers leaving each year rose substantially since the 2021-2020 school year until this year, when it actually declined to 134 teachers to start the 2024-2025 school year. Out of the 134 departures this past year, 79 were due to retirement, relocation, or family care needs. The remaining 58 departures were due to factors such as compensation, mentoring opportunities, or other opportunities for growth. To dig a little deeper into the data for this past school year, we had 134 instructional staff resign or retire in 2023, 2024, and the year before, that number was 172. Within that 134, we had 18 retirees, 32 relocations, and 19 that left the profession. An alarming figure is that 62 of these, or just a little less than half, were for separations for teachers in their first 10 years of teaching. Several of the stated reasons for some of our teachers left to leave included more money from neighboring school divisions, career change, leaving teaching for the private sector, relocation, staying at home, work-life balance, or just being overwhelmed. This amount of turnover makes it challenging to maintain a culture of excellence. Reflecting back on the information provided by Bolton, and as we shared last year, there is a need to be more competitive at our lowest grades. On this slide, we show the starting salary of our neighboring school divisions, also James City County and the College of William &amp; Mary, for support staff on our grade five, which includes custodians, cafeteria workers, and bus aides. And similarly, we wanted to show what an impact of a 3% raise on this group of employees. On this slide, we show the starting salary of our neighboring school divisions for support staff on grade six, which includes our Level One teacher assistants. And similarly, we wanted to show the impact of a 3% raise on this group of employees. On the next slide, we show the starting salary of our neighboring school divisions for support staff for grade seven, which includes our Level Two teacher assistants and some clerical staff. And again, we wanted to show the impact of a 3% raise on this group of employees. On this slide, we show the starting salary of our neighboring school divisions and for WADA for support staff on our grade eight, which includes bus drivers, which is an area of great need. The WJCC scenario, we also showed an increase on the bar where our salary would be if we increased it by 3% and then also increased it a dollar more than that, a dollar more, $2 more, and then $3 more compared to our neighboring school divisions.
Given that we currently have 37 vacancies for bus drivers, we have calculated the cost to provide a mid-year pay increase effective January 1st, as well as the cost to maintain the increase in fiscal year 26 for the board's consideration. In order to support the increase next year, we would recommend reducing bus driver FTEs by four for a savings of 140,000.
I'd like to just stop for a moment there. This is, we're starting to get into the compensation. And you probably noticed all the graphs, they look the same as last year. We haven't moved place. If we get 3% across the board from the state SOQ funding, everybody else gets it too. So to move anywhere in that ranking, and we have three and some, and six and some in particular, bus drivers, we would have to think about additional pay either across the board or and looking at where we would want to make significant differences with various groups of employees, just like we did last year. So as we start to move through this piece, we're really interested in getting some leaning from the board as to where you are in some of this, so that we know how to build the budget going into February, because that's going to be really, really important. I'm going to hold for just a minute. I mean, the different, one hour, a dollar an hour, $2 an hour, $3 an hour, they're very different costs. We do have the funding to make that immediate this year, but if you look at the second line on the chart, excuse me, there is a cost moving forward because we've just got half a year left right now to make an increase. One of the ways to defray some of that cost is by reducing the FTEs that we're unable to find at this moment in time by four, and that does help defray some of the costs. But depending on what the board wants to do, looking at this, and maybe coming back next meeting to make a decision, we have to first put this into our new budget, as we're committing to it, not just for this six months, but for the next year as well.
You want us to discuss them now?
Absolutely. That would be wonderful, actually.
Have a discussion about specifically about bus driver pay and what we've seen so far, Mr. Riffle?
Can I ask a question about the full-time positions? The full-time positions, and what four full-time positions are we, will we relieve? Would it just bus drivers?
They would be bus drivers' positions we can't fill right now. We know we can run effectively on a few less, and this would help to defray some of the cost.
Because we're funding them in their current scheme, right?
Yeah, I think we currently have, was it 37?
37 vacancies.
Vacancies, we're not running, and we're not running effectively right now, obviously. So we could reduce the number of FTEs by four in bus drivers to be able to help us do this, moving into next year.
Could I ask one more question? Why would we not release it more? Why would we not reduce it to like six or eight or something like that? Why four? Why did we stop there?
It makes us competitive. I'm going to speak to that. Dr. Kiefer, maybe jump in. You've been looking at this quite a bit.
Is your question why we wouldn't reduce it even further?
Right, yeah, they can create more surplus that way, right?
I think that's a possibility as we get into February and March to consider. I think initially, as we look at all of the different items that the board may want to think about relative to the budget and other compensation features, you may, you may want to start with four. It's kind of our recommendation to begin with as an offset, specifically to help address driver pay.
Because I asked, because we did give a bonus at the end to all bus drivers that were around. And that's why, like, if we were to have this lump sum, like, would it be better to kind of give it upfront so that people understand what they're going to hire? But I get it, I might understand, but I'm just asking.
Lots of different options to consider. If we go back one slide, the three, if you look at the very left-hand column now, you know the price tag attached to it and what it means. If you look at how we then would compare across, we do move up in the ranking fairly significantly because we're including everybody doing 3% and then potentially adding $1, $2, or $3 an hour. Obviously, it takes the three to really make a difference, to keep our drivers and sustain our system.
Ms. Chen, did you have a comment or a question? Oh, okay, I thought you raised your hand before. I have a question, if everyone else is still thinking. What, do we have a sense of what the vacancy count in Newport News is?
Mr. Snipes, any information? We can certainly get that. Mr. Lombuster can reach out. I think everybody has a vacancy rate, but probably not quite like ours, I'm guessing.
I'm just, I'm curious, if, you know, if they have 37 vacancies, that they're, you know, would, would, you know, is it really the money or is it just lack of people that have the qualifications?
I think it's going to, I think it's probably going to be both, but that's a really good question, and I think it's a good figure to look at, to give us a sense, is it the same everywhere? But we'll come back to you with that and miss, miss me Q.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Uh, Mrs. Donner?
With the, with the pay and the drivers, is there, I know there is questions about six-hour jobs versus eight-hour jobs. Like, how does that factor into this and making it desirable?
We've been looking at that in some detail, and either Mr. Snipes or Dr. Kiefer both may want to jump in and talk through some of the considerations that we're starting to look at. Not everybody drives it hours a day. Most at the moment do because we're short. And so we'd need to, we've been looking to see what options there are there. Dr. Kiefer, want to start, and then Mr. Snipes add where you want to?
There are, there are a number of different factors to consider. Some of our drivers would prefer not to be on a contract for eight because they're, they have other potential sources of income. We want to consider contractual hour numbers as we go into the 25, 26 year, and in to the greatest extent possible, for those that are interested in the eight-hour contracts, we would like to be able to issue those. Making that change mid-year, we felt like would be particularly more challenging than we're ready to be able to do. We do feel like that making a change to the hourly wage now, since we're able, A, to afford it, and B, come up with a potential partial offset for the next budget cycle, is a good first step in helping to address some of our challenges.
Mrs. Hunley?
Yes, do we have any statistics of how many of our bus drivers that did leave? Did they go to WADA or York County? Do we know, or did they just actually just?
Mr. Snipes, would you have any background or Mr. Baker on that? You know, you both speak to folks as they're leaving.
We, we speak to our drivers as they leave. We don't have any specific data on where they actually have gone.
Uh, we, we speak to our drivers as they leave. Um, we don't have any specific data on where they actually have gone. Um, and that is because sometimes they tell us and sometimes they don't. Um, I would hate to tell you that they're going to another school division. I know some have, but some have also just left us in general because they're just getting out of their profession.
Challenge with the exiting piece is, uh, the information that is shared is the information that the former employee wishes to give you at the time. And so sometimes that is absolutely directly correlated to the reason and, and specific desire to move on, and sometimes it isn't. So we, we try to be a little bit careful when we start sharing data around departures because it is, it's self-reported, and it, it's not like trading a player to, from this team to that team, and you know that they get there. So we want, we want to be just a tad bit careful on that.
Dr. Kravazos, did you have a finger?
I have one question. Um, everybody seems to be telling me that this number of bus driver vacancies is really pretty high. Is this historical or is this an outlier?
I think it's become a problem over time. If we go back before the pandemic, we didn't have an issue. Mr. Snipes, if you want to speak to that for me?
Dr. Heron is correct. Um, before the pandemic, I remember it's probably in twenty-nineteen where we were fully staffed with, um, about a hundred and eleven drivers. Um, and since that time, we currently have about seventy-nine drivers, so we are out of the hundred and fourteen that were budgeted, so that's why we're about thirty-seven short.
I think one of the biggest challenges during the pandemic is that people who've been doing it for a long time retired. COVID, you know, pushed people into retirement at that time for fear and for many other reasons as well. And I do think some, there's many challenges being a bus driver. It's, it's an extremely difficult job.
So the question I asked, and if there, if it's been a kind of an ongoing situation, why do we think money is gonna make a difference?
I think it's, it's making us competitive. If, if people are going to come, it's going to look at salaries across the region, so it's one factor. However, we are working on other pieces of the puzzle as well, Mr. Snipes.
I think it's, it's an experience. It also is amount of retaining our staff. Uh, we don't want staff looking at other school divisions determining that their hourly pay is higher, and they go there. So this is also an opportunity to retain some staff as well.
So when you say you're talking about other aspects of retaining, um, how often do you think, um, student behavior on the bus makes a difference?
Uh, I believe it's been a significant piece for bus drivers, and I know Mr., uh, Dr. Brown has worked with his staff to give some training to bus drivers in that area, and that was part of the bus driver training at the beginning of last year because of the impact of student behavior. Dr. Brown, want to speak to that, just what we've done in that area? I know it's fairly significant, and it's an ongoing work of, of course.
We did, uh, training during the pre-service time, working around, um, positive supports on the bus. Uh, we've also worked with principals on identifying specific runs where behaviors have been a overarching concern. Uh, most recently, in a middle school, we did a specific training with bus drivers and the students on a particular run that was posing some challenges. So we're trying to right now target specific runs that are posing some issues.
The only reason I say that is because I've had people come to me and say, you know, my husband got this with this, and that has to do with student behavior, and they said, we're not gonna just put up with it anymore.
Right, and we're doing everything we can to, to support drivers in their role, but it's, it's an ongoing process, and, and it's, it's a work that's ongoing for sure. Very aware of it, concerned about it, and, and working through whatever we can to make it better.
We've also shared with the community through our, our family newsletter, the importance of behavior on the bus and the, the need for us as community members and stakeholders to be engaged with our children on their, how they handle themselves on the bus, because frankly, we don't have drivers to support absences or drivers to support when they walk off the job because they are frustrated. So it, it really does take all of us, um, and to your point, Dr. Kravazos, and, and to Mr. Snipes's point as well, making the salary adjustment, we think will help us retain and get through the, the close of the year and hopefully also attract some other folks. We also want to build the culture of the driving team, and, and I think that that's something that, uh, Mr. Snipes and Mr. Lambusta and the, the team at Transportation have work to do over the course of this year. As an example, uh, Mr. Lambusta has established a, a, a driver group that provides him quarterly feedback on how things are going based on Bus Depot in, in terms of where drivers are stationed, and getting some real-time feedback on, here are the challenges, here are the successes, and what might we administratively be able to do in order to support. And part of that feedback kind of led to the outgrowth that Dr. Brown talked about in terms of behavioral. So it, we're trying to take a team approach with those seventy-nine folks that we have because they are pretty critical for our ability to get to school in the morning and get home in the afternoon.
Um, Mr. Hoseng, and then Mrs. Henley, and then Mrs. Donner.
Uh, just, um, I, I guess I have two points. One, based off what Dr. Kravazos was just talking about. I'm hoping the, the cameras that we've approved that will be on the buses will be able to help the disciplinary issues that we're having. Uh, is that, I'm assuming that's being looked at in being helpful?
Certainly, the cameras are much clearer than, than they used to be, and that is very, very helpful in following up after a concern from a driver or, or, or a family member.
And do we have any feedback from the bus drivers?
Mr. Snipes?
Feedback on, from the bus driver on the camera system?
Yeah, the, and the use of it and, and how reliable or if it's beneficial?
No, but our transportation office team, um, uses those cameras consistently to communicate with, uh, principals and with Dr. Brown on instances. So they, they are very happy with the camera system. Our drivers don't typically see the camera system. Um, they don't interact with it, but our, our transportation staff in the offices, Mr. Lambusta and Mrs. Delk.
But the, like, but the bus drivers know that tho- those can be used if they have issues.
Well, yes, definitely.
And I just want to make sure that we're understanding this chart, that this is just a basic three percent increase for the other, um, districts. We don't know if they're going to
Correct.
increase it beyond what we're estimating on this. So this is just our guess.
It, it is, and it, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good step. Um, we don't know if it'll be enough. Um, this is, when you look at our placement, eh, regionally, this is where we are, the furthest behind, we're last, basically.
Mrs. Henley?
This isn't a question but a comment. So we have a lot of students that the car lines have increased. That's before my time. I don't remember us, uh, parents bringing so many children to school. If those, uh, families decided to go not, you, you know, use transportation again, we'd have even a bigger issue then. Wow, okay. I was just wondering about that.
Mrs. Donner?
I think just also in thinking about this investment of, um, the impact that this could have on teacher satisfaction as well, because I feel like we've heard a lot from the teachers about having to wait for the late buses, um, kids getting to school late, which then throws off their, their less, their lessened time. And so it seems like it's a less than two-hundred-thousand-dollar investment for the rest of the year, and then less than half a million dollars to go forward. But if we are able to attract and retain bus, the bus drivers, that can also go to some of the teachers, teacher and teacher's satisfaction as well.
Yeah, I think that that's from what I've heard in my non-scientific survey, uh, from talking to teachers in different school visits. It does seem like if we could fix the transportation issue, it, it is the, the foundation of a lot of other issues. Um, I have two, two other questions real quick. Do we know if most of our drivers live within our Williamsburg-James City County?
Yes, I can tell you that a majority of our citizens do, uh, drivers do live within the city of Williamsburg and James City County. Where a few, few travel outside, a few travel from outside too.
So it's not a, I'm asking because it's not necessarily a job that you would travel from Newport News at four in the morning to come drive a bus. It's, it's not necessarily, it's a, it's a local, our, our staff, you know, come from, from our locality.
We do have a lot of local, um, bus drivers. However, you know, there are other school divisions that are close that we could attract citizens from as well, so, um, not just Newport News. I know some of us here on SLT, uh, travel from other locations to work here in Williamsburg, so that could be an opportunity for drivers as well.
And then my last question is, um, I know more, more pay is always, you know, fundamental to satisfaction, but would an investment in bus aides, um, to help with some of the behavior issues or someone else on the bus to monitor what's going on with the children so the driver can focus on the road? Would, would that be a good investment?
We have a number of aides now. We don't, um, or Mr. Snipes, rather, speak to the, the number of aides we have and what buses they generally help with.
Uh, we have about thirty-seven aides currently, and they are used on our, uh, pre-K buses and on some of our sped buses, um, to assist with loading and unloading of our pre-K students, and of course assisting for our students with these, uh, needs on our special needs buses.
And, and so if we were to add aides to every bus to, to help with that monitoring of student behavior and, uh, on the bus, it's a significant number to put an aide on every bus.
But, but it seems like we have certain runs that have been identified as particularly challenging, and perhaps some aides on those would be worth the money.
I think that's a, that's a possibility for certain. Um, we, the adding of the FTEs for the aides, doesn't necessarily help us get, uh, a stronger efficiency rating or on-time rating accomplished. So that's a, eh, eh, we, we do need more drivers first, first and foremost. But there is, uh, the possibility that on a couple of those runs, it might help to have an additional adult, adult on the bus at, at various points, and that's something that we could certainly look at and consider.
Because it adds to efficiency if that bus driver doesn't quit versus quitting.
Absolutely.
True.
Yeah.
And we, we love the idea, but there's, as you begin to see some of the other ideas that are coming forward, it may be something the board wants to come back and reconsider. But, you know, it certainly would be worth piloting, uh, on a couple of buses to see the impact that it has, for sure.
Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, I'd like to, if we can move to the discussion part, I have a longer, are, are we getting to the part where you like say, like, which part are we somewhat supporting? Right?
Sure, say, say whatever.
Okay, um, I think the three dollars an hour is a worthwhile investment as we approach, um, the, um, redistricting process. I don't really want to get to a position where we're redistricting and like, in need of a position, particularly in buses. Um, because that, that is a challenge when you, when you do that process, like, when you make effective bus routes, and now these routes are changing based off the lines and things like that. So, um, I think we need to put ourselves in a better position as we approach that kind of difficult part of the board's job. Um, so I think the more we can do, the better, and I, I probably, I won't be wavering on three dollars an hour for this, so.
Yeah, can I get a sense from other board members on where you're leading, looking at this chart, what you think might be at this stage? I know it's early.
I also agree with the, um, three-hour increase. For many reasons, I'll just name a few. Um, I feel like if most of our drivers come from our local community, I mean, they need a livable wage to be able to continue to do well in their job and, and, um, me, like, at least that, that seems like the bare minimum, the three dollars. Um, and then, um, also on all of our school visits, the number one sort of pain point has been transportation for all levels from elementary to high school, um, for various reasons. Um, so, you know, our teachers, like, has already been said, I think that's a great point, not just to support our bus drivers, but, um, our teachers and our support staff, and, um, so, yeah, I agree with that.
Dr. Kravazos?
Um, I think there's a lot of fundamental problems of why we don't get these last thirty-seven or whatever, forty bus drivers. I think the three-dollar increase is a reasonable attempt. Um, I'd be, be curious to see what happens in the year from two, and, you know, the pay's gone up and we're still at thirty-seven. But I don't want to be pessimistic, so if this helps, then okay, it helps, I'm okay with that. And, and I hope that it does, but I'm really thinking there's a lot of other variables that come into play. There's probably not thirty-seven drivers out there just sitting there waiting for a three-dollar increase to come and look for us. That's what I'm saying, but let's hope so.
Mr. Hoseng?
I, I think I agree with Dr. Kravazos. I'd like to see, and I think what you had asked, ma'am, uh, before about what the other, um, numbers are for.
Numbers are for the other, um, districts that we're, we're dealing with. Um, I think at least at now for a starting point for the budget, uh, to get the, the talks going, um, go ahead and putting in the three-dollar an hour increase at this point. If for some reason we need to do, make changes, we can affect that later on, but at least we've got that in there to see what the numbers are gonna look like.
Mrs. Hen, I, I don't know if I've asked everyone, but you agree?
I don't have anything to add, um, different. I agree with what I've heard thus far.
Okay, Mrs. Donner?
I agree.
Okay.
So our biggest, uh, just to, to be clear, we would, we would bring this back to the board to consider increasing the per hour by three dollars starting immediately, and you would consider that at the next meeting, and we would probably, we would plan to make it proactive to January one, um, and start that extra three dollars an hour to take us through the rest of the year. By doing that, we really are in effect committing to that for next budget because you can't give it and then take it away. And, and so if we move forward, we're really committing, not just for six months, but for the next year's budget as well. And I think we certainly can come back. We're talking about defraying the cost by three FTEs. We can continue that analysis to see what else we can use to, to defray some of the cost of doing that next year.
So are you okay, given that, Mr. Hoseng, not, not a lot of flexibility?
Understand, yes, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Is that good?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Now, we're gonna move on and look at some mandatory and essential operating expenditure increases. If you recall, as part of balancing the fiscal year twenty-five budget last year, we planned for continued funding of several positions with ESAR funds as well as the trailer leases for July through September of the current fiscal year. We will need to add these amounts to our fiscal year twenty-six budget to account for a full year of funding for these items. The total for these positions and the trailer leases is two-hundred-thirty thousand. Mr. Walker will now share information regarding our English learner population as well as required staffing.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, school members, and Dr. Heron. This bar graph illustrates a clear increase in our English learner student enrollment over the past four years, with each bar representing the number of students enrolled in our language instruction educational program. The six-point-five percent listed for twenty-eighteen nineteen on the far left, and then nine percent for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five on the far right, represent the English learner percentages of the total WJCC student enrollment. This consistent growth in EL enrollment over the last four years suggests a rising demand for English language support for our EL students, ongoing investment in resources, training, and tailored support services to meet the diverse needs of this expanding student population, representing eighty-four countries, forty-nine languages, and seventy-five percent of those are Spanish-speaking students. This chart may look familiar because you received a detailed presentation back in October regarding our English learner students and the required instructional programming. This chart displays the distribution of English learners across the language proficiency levels, level one, level two, level three, level four, and monitor students, separated by elementary school, middle school, and high school. Notably, level one, level two students combined together represent just under fifty percent of our total English learner student enrollment. Level one students are mostly newcomers with very little English, and level-two EL students are just beginning to develop their English language acquisition. Both of these two levels require the most support and resources. Overall, this chart underscores the importance of tailored instructional strategies to support English learners across the various proficiency levels. The Language Instruction Educational Program, or LEAP, program, was staffed based on the Virginia Department of Education's guidance of one to fifty, which means for every fifty English learner students, there should be one LEAP teacher. In May of twenty-twenty-four, the Virginia General Assembly approved the new staffing model, which is now based on need. With this new staffing model that goes into effect for school year twenty-five, twenty-six, we will need thirty-one point zero nine LEAP teachers. But we are recommending rounding that to a total of thirty-two LEAP teachers due to this increasing EL student enrollment over the last four years. But we are recommending rounding that to a total of thirty two LEAP teachers due to this increasing E L student enrollment over the last four years. So if we take a closer look at the new staffing model, that explains the following staffing ratios. For level one students, it must be a one to twenty caseload. Meaning one LEAP teacher for every twenty level one English learner students. Currently, we have three hundred six E L students at level one across the division. Which will require fifteen point three teacher allocations. For level two, the caseload increases to one to thirty. With a hundred and eighty one students across the division at level two, that will require six teacher allocations. We move on to level three, the caseload increases to one to forty. With two hundred and sixty students across the division at level three, this will require six point five teacher allocations. And level four, it increases to a one to fifty caseload. With forty seven students total across the division, that requires one teacher allocation. Monitor student status requires a one to one hundred caseload. With two hundred and thirty five of those students across the division, that will require two point three five teacher allocations. With a grand total of thirty one point zero nine, as we recommended thirty two.
Real quick, these are additional or to does this encompass positions that we currently also have?
We currently have twenty two in the operating budget and near the start of the year, we increased three additional to twenty five. But moving forward, correct Ms. Ewing, we need to move from twenty two that was originally in the operating budget up to thirty two.
So seven, we need seven.
No.
Budget to budget, we need to add ten.
We currently have twenty four LEAP teachers in place, working with our students across the division now.
That was my question.
Well, they're not permanently budgeted right now. We we hired them with vacant positions and put them in place because we needed them immediately. And to to fully fund those and the others that we need, it's it's plus ten.
Okay, but not plus thirty one.
I think because the staffing model changed from one to fifty and then it it made a a significant and a good change to really put the resources where they're needed.
Uh Mister Riffle.
Yeah, I actually have a question about actually the previous model, this trans- is transportation part of the model? That's the state funds, like do we get a points or I know there's a point system coming out, it is it. You know what I'm talking about, like this is E L is like learning is part of a point system model where you get scored for your school's level accreditation? Is transportation part of that?
It transportation is not part of it, but it is included in accreditation for student achievement, absolutely.
Accredita- new student achievement is. See, why the state not do transportation in the model like? We fund this, but I so you know what I mean, it just it doesn't it doesn't line up, like why would they ask for these anyways, I'm sorry, thank you.
So in summary, based on the revised staffing model that's been approved by the General Assembly. And to remain in compliance with the standards of quality, we're requesting those additional ten F T Es. For LEAP teachers who will work directly with our English learner students for next fiscal year.
I have a question.
Mrs. Henley.
Just for someone that may be watching. If if you have a school, let's say you have a school that has level one and they have sixty kids. Does that mean they get three teachers at that school, they right, so it is equitable as far as.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
And and even with our staffing currently now with the one to fifty caseload ratio, we look at the number of students in level. For instance, an example would be James River Elementary. The most E L students, um and they have three full-time LEAP teachers on staff.
Alright, Mrs. Donner.
So in understanding what the new kind of state regulations is, this is something that is a have to do, not a optional.
Any other questions at this juncture? I have a um. Real quick question, how um. How often or what I I don't know if this is answerable, actually. My first question is, how, what is the rate of students moving from level to level? Because they do they do learn over time and and so you you have a large caseload at one and two. Hopefully, they would be moving into two and three and three and four.
Correct.
Um and then, of course, and then another unknowable is the rate at which additional students are coming in. So how do we assess those numbers?
Well, annually, the students are required um to take WEATA access testing. That we report those numbers for federal indicators for accreditation and accountability. Um but you'll notice that the elementary level, we we have more level one and level two. And that's understandable with students coming in either very little English or beginning to acquire that and moving through.
But typically, a student does move through the levels.
Absolutely.
So if we're having difficulty um obtaining teachers. How, what if we don't have ten LEAP teachers, I mean, do we contract out, what do we do?
We're gonna advertise and try to get the best. Yeah, it's it's a constant, I believe, struggle, as Mister Baker said, the hiring season never stops.
These are standards, they're not recommendations, right? Is that what I'm led to believe?
This is this is standards, this is standards of quality, so we, this is not a recommendation, this is a requirement for staffing. Or it's for English learners and yes, there was a little bit of money in the budget this year. Or next year for English learners, but again, we don't ever get the full amount because of our L C I. So you get a certain amount, thirty percent and seventy percent still funded by locally. So it still falls back to us as the locality to to meet the standard.
Non-funded mandate.
Yes, yes, sir.
Partially funded mandate.
Partially funded for us.
Yes.
Split the word.
Thank you.
Moving on and looking at other teachers across the division. Based on our teacher staffing ratios at the elementary level as outlined here. We anticipate needing an additional three F T Es at a cost of two hundred seventy thousand. And then looking at high school, in order to maintain our adopted class size ratios for high school. Four additional teachers will be needed next year at an estimated cost of three hundred sixty thousand. This will be reviewed once course requests are finalized over the next month.
Mrs. Donner.
I I do have a question about how we think about compensation, particularly for some of these hard to hire. Requirements, so. You know, I I understand like our philosophy has been from a teacher, a teacher is a teacher, so. It there is no extra bump if you're a science teacher or a math teacher or uh a. You know, English language teacher for special ed and those are sometimes hard to attract. You know, do we, are there other ways to think about that? Or to make to entice in order to hire these additional, but we're looking at ten teachers? And are there ways to do that through bonuses or some other things to fill these hard to fill specialties?
I think that's something that we could um explore more fully. In some iterations of senior leadership discussions, we've. We've wondered about, do you? Do you add a certain amount of additional value to a particular teacher that you're trying to bring in? I'll use physics and as as an example, generally, you don't have tons of physics teachers, you probably have one per school. If you have a vacancy in physics and it's a hard to staff area, do you increase the initial compensation? Do you give a an initial stipend? We could look at that organizationally, if that's something that the board feels like would be. Worth exploring in some of our deliberations. We wondered about the the net impact on other folks who also feel like. Their role is very specific. And or so a- as a as an endorsed social studies teacher, generally, you can find social studies teachers. But I thought that I was pretty good, do I not deserve the additional forty five hundred dollars to come in the door? And work in this particular locality, so I I think that. We could study it, I think there are some school divisions that have used that model. I'm not sure the ultimate uh net positive, but it's something that we could certainly look at from the uh human resources employment side.
I think I would add to that, um in a time when teachers are not scarce across the board. That method might look very different because you you may have plenty of applicants for one type of position. But we're actually short across the board, so it may not be as effective in our current environment.
I guess a question off that, like wouldn't. Uh my thoughts like up like say let's use social studies as the example, like if I'm hiring a a vacancy that's in social studies department. Um like teacher satisfaction would be higher, there's all the roles are filled, right? So like, I think there's a merit to someone looking at like a smaller stipend, not like forty five hundred dollars, that's a lot of money. But I I think there is some simplicity in that, I I just I don't know, I just know that like a thousand bucks to somebody is probably better for us as a board than. You know what I mean, it's like the investment of like that person getting to the door and working with that team and it's like now it's full, you know, so. I I don't know what example this could be really used in our division, but I think the satisfaction of our employees that like cover for that teacher now are like. That then don't have someone else also to work with the lunch break, whatever else that they they get put in their lives, it's like there's more people out there. Where people are part of the team to play goalie or whatever else positions that the coach needs, so.
Yeah, I think I think we'll certainly look at some options. I know a lot of systems have offered bonuses for bus drivers to bring them from other systems as well, but then. When another system offers a bonus, then they then go, they move again. So it's how to to have people here treat them well and and have them become loyal to us as an organization is 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 really important.
Uh for the twenty five twenty six school year, we will need to add one school counselor to maintain our current level of service. The addition of one school counselor allows us to maintain the recommended ratio of two hundred fifty to one set by the American School Counseling Association. Additionally, this supports our ability to meet the Virginia State Code of providing eighty percent of counselor time and direct services to students. And Doctor Brown will now share information related to special education.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and Doctor Heron. In order to provide context to the special education mandated needs, we'll begin by looking at the population trends overall. The numbers presented here represent students receiving special education services as documented in our December one state reporting document. This is used to determine state and federal funding for special education for the next fiscal year. The December one count, excuse me, count for this year shows an overall increase of five students. These numbers project a stabilization to our special education population in W J C C. This slide highlights the special education population of bright beginnings as long with along with students in grades K through twelve. It's important to note that the overall percentage of enrolled K through twelve students receiving services through the I E P is sixteen point four percent of our overall population. Historically, historically, the percentage of enrollment for special education of bright beginnings trends upwards over sixty percent as we progress through the school year. Looking at this year's data, the number of caseloads above the maximum caseload is at one. These caseloads numbers adjust monthly based on revised I E Ps requiring increased services as well as to transfer our newly eligible students. It's important to note that these caseloads numbers reflect caseloads against total allocations for each school. The Department of Special Education will continue to monitor enrollment and caseloads throughout the first semester. This graph shows the five-year history of our special education expenditures and the funding source. The light green area of each column represents the amount of federal funding, which is approximately nine percent. The purple represents the amount of state funding, which is approximately twenty one percent. And the blue represents the amount of local funding, which is approximately seventy percent. For fiscal year twenty four, the amount of state and federal funding was eight million and the amount of local funding was eighteen point seven. This year, an additional point five teacher position was added to James River Elementary as determined by caseload allocations and needs. Four special education teacher assistance positions have been added this year to meet the needs as determined by I E P teams. These unanticipated positions are detailed on the next slide.
Can I'm just for one question, the numbers in parentheses, can you remind me what that means again?
A a reduction.
Reduction, okay.
Reduction in the student count.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. As discussed, the current F T Es are being proposed to be included in the operating budget to maintain level of service for students at James River Elementary. By adding a point five teacher F T E allocation. And four teacher assistant positions across the division to meet the level of services as determined by I E P teams. And our existing services determined by I E P teams for students that have enrolled in our division. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding proposed additions.
So again, meeting the levels of services for special education students is mandatory. We will present some other things that are not, but this this one falls into that category and when you look at the numbers. And local, state and federal funding. There all of this, a significant portion of this rests with the locality again, and this is probably one of the highest unfunded mandates that any school division has.
Mrs. Donner.
About um looking at the. The fluctuations and changes and you know, some years it's like fifty, eighty. And then you have a spike of a hundred and fifty one or a spike of a hundred and twenty three. Do you have any insights as to what drives such a huge significant increase in certain years?
So I think specific to the reduction uh that you saw for two consecutive years, that was time when students were. Either in a hyper model or doing virtual learning, part of the eligibility process of special education is to rule out any other adverse impacts. And so I think and it wasn't, we were not exclusive, this was trends across the country that students that were learning at home. The eligibility teams had to determine, is it because of the current instructional setting that's impacting their learning or is it something else? As students returned to in-person learning. Those maybe ruled out, maybe got ruled into special education as they returned to in-person learning, we saw that those impacts affected them throughout the instructional day. Um I think at the state level and national level, we continue to see rates increase. I'd be curious to see if nationally and state, if they start to stabilize like we've seen.
I just, this seems like a good thing, the state model's done, it's kind of creating more positions for to kind of give more services to our students. Over over the past couple we've talked about, um I just, I I'm wondering for this particular section, this is bad education. Like how much is it, do you think it's gonna impact our neighboring divisions? I know that these are also kind of harder positions to attract. Um like if Newport News is also receiving a new standard of quality that they have to provide. And new cat, you know, like I mean, I know we're at the highest threshold when it comes to that as well or compared for our neighbors. The amount of our students that actually receive services from that, I just don't know, like I'm just kind of like lost, like. When we create these positions, like will they be filled, right, like?
Yeah, so currently out of the one twenty six, we have four vacancies. We have, we have. Really had to think outside the box on how sometimes we staff and give people to to work up in terms of the specific regulations dictating S O Qs for special ed. That is not changed, um but I I would predict as we start to see. Things stabilizing, the continued recruiting efforts from all divisions to try to attract specialist certified or even pathway to licensure options.
Mister Riffle, if you recall, we had a contract for services as well to fulfill the needs that we couldn't do through actual people employed here.
Thank you, I'm just pointing out kind of like we are adding, not only these positions, but ones we previously talked about, I'm sure there's a couple more in this presentation, like. It's not just us doing this, but like the market's not getting bigger as we add these positions, right, like it's still the same market we're in currently, right, so. It's a, it's a kind of a grapple, like what is the system doing to kind of help us out? Clearly, this is a part where we're underfunded and we're doing our best to kind of keep up with it, so so thank you.
So just to clarify, we currently have four unfilled positions for special ed teachers, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So we should, when we add this, we will have four point five unfilled positions?
Uh I'm sorry, that we have already added that point five this year to help because of based off of the needs at James River. Um but that is currently unfunded, so the the four includes the addition of that point five.
Okay, and what about the four aids?
Uh I would have to talk, ask this, I'm not sure of the vacancy status on the on the T A's, but I can. I can account for that, but that add already accounts for the four that we are have already added these four positions for this year to meet the needs of the students. So this is bringing it over to operating for next year.
So we have people in those positions?
Yeah, I would I would have to verify if we've actually staffed those four, so for the point five for James River, we have not staffed that yet, we're we're seeking to hire that. But allocations that we've added, whether or not we've actually staffed this, I don't have, I could find that out. Okay, also, I guess it kind of sparks a question in the last thing we talked about, I'm like, at what point does. Do we know that these things will be filled? Like I I it's just kind of odd to like, I I know that this is a mandatory thing, and I understand the state is trying to do its part and maybe revitalizing the system, but. They also aren't funding it more than they should, so like, we're kind of going to be in the same problem of like, here's this open position that. We're not, we're gonna have to budget for, and then they won't be full, and then, you know what I mean, it's kind of like a weird stuff, and it's weirder for us, cause like. Our L C I is so high compared to like Hampton, Newport News and New Kent who like get to kind of run around, like maybe change very little. And actually less probably positions than we do in this, especially in this category. But yeah, I I know everyone's like kind of looking around, like it's true, like it's it's very true, I mean.
I think it's always going to be a challenge when you you're trying to present what you really need and must have to serve every student. Knowing that you may not fill every position, but I think we still need to present it, that's where we would be at our our maximum. Capacity uh for for providing services and then keep working hard to fill those positions.
I want to be clear, no, no way saying we shouldn't meet this dinner, I'm just saying like the reality of like where we've been this year. Yeah, it's just like essentially like. Are we just like fighting for empty positions, you know, so. What's just going to be a thing that they kind of ask for, right, talk to our lovely funding partners and. That's the other thing, it's like, I mean, this is a big ask, I mean, like, if we're gonna go through this whole thing, I think it's like five point six million and just in general of this.
Yeah, we've only just started.
Thank you, sorry.
Anything else for Dr. Brown? If you were done. As you saw in a previous slide, our federal funding for special education is approximately ten percent of our funding. And it has remained at the same funding level for many years, yet our costs increase each year. Additionally, our Title II grant saw a reduction in funding this year of approximately thirty four thousand. Given the uncertainty of federal funding for K twelve education, we are recommending that we transition four speech language pathologists. And the K five literacy coordinator from grant funding to operating funds. We will also be in our final year of eligibility for the elementary security officer grant, we will plan to move these positions into the operating fund as well. We may know by final budget adoption in May if we will receive funding for these positions through the grant. This grant does however have a matching requirement, so even if we receive the grant again for all nine positions. A minimum of two hundred fifty thousand will be required in the operating fund to support the match requirement. At this time, we do not have information from New Horizons regarding costs for next year, so we are estimating a fifteen percent increase. At a cost of three hundred fifty eight thousand. The Canvas Learning Management System and Digital Resource Hub is used in all K twelve classrooms. And has been funded by the state for the past five years. At this time, it is unknown if there will be continued state funding, so we are including one hundred thousand for continued use of this program. Likewise, Lexia is a tier two adaptive literacy tool currently funded by the state through all in, which will not be continued next year. And based on current I E P placements and increased cost, we anticipate an additional seventy one thousand needed for special education, private day tuition.
That's a question.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Riffle.
Lexia part of the new, like wasn't that a part of like the new standard that the state put out for English? And then they're not funding it now? Or is that just additional in tier two?
Yeah, I think one of the challenges is that with S R grants, a lot of things were funded and Canvas was involved, was included in that at the state level. And we learned recently that without S R funds, the state was no longer funding it, so that's a fairly recent uh understanding of that. I do believe they are still trying to find funding elsewhere, so that may change. Um the all-in funding was great, we used it very effectively, but it was one-time funding. I think our biggest challenge is when, when anyone gives us funding and it's one-time funding. Then it's very hard for us to sustain it over time, yet there is an expectancy that you you use everything you're given. To the greatest extent possible, so you provide services and then you have to either keep them going locally or take them away. And so this is some, the Canvas, we learn, we use that system across across every school, every department. And that's something we can't do without, literally.
Well, just I I mean, the Lexi is not like that expensive, but the state's not doing their part for a program that they are requiring us to implement, that's what I'm saying, like it's it's an English standard program. And they're like, can't throw us a bone here, like, that's what I I know it's like.
Yeah, this is not, Lexi is not required, but but it is a very effective tool that we were encouraged to use. With all in funding that we want to continue using for students.
Really quickly, why why are we anticipating fifteen percent for New Horizons, is that typical?
Um it's a try to range at this point on the higher side, it's usually not that high. It's just too early in the process to know where we're gonna be, um New Horizons, it depends on what each locality's salary increase is gonna be. And so they've just started reaching out to the um divisions to see where we're gonna be with salaries, so they can work on a budget request. I don't, historically, it hasn't been that high. Currently, at this point in the budget process, uh we are also estimating a fifteen percent increase in workers' comp. Uh general liability, fleet and property insurances, which amounts to approximately ninety nine thousand. And based on information provided by James City County, our shared services contracts for both risk management and purchasing are estimated to increase by one hundred sixteen thousand. Technology licenses and professional services are estimated to increase by approximately seventy five thousand. Part of this increase is due to the change in the license structure by Microsoft. And required additional licenses to cover additional positions. This amount also includes annual increases for our email archive service, network switch maintenance system, email security system. And the Power School Suite utilized by Human Resources for applicant tracking, substitute management and records. And earlier this year, the board approved a policy update whereby W J C C covers the cost for new employee background searches. And this estimated cost is sixteen thousand five hundred. Utility increases are something that we will need to plan for next year as well. We are estimating an increase of four hundred thousand is needed in this area based on fiscal year twenty four actuals. Uh contractual increases for operations amount to approximately one hundred ninety two thousand. Which includes our radio maintenance agreement and ground services with James City County. The annual increase for our storage facility, preventative maintenance agreements and safety and security increases. For our visitor management and emergency management systems. Additionally, the cost of paper products, trash bags and disinfectants have continued to rise. And we estimate an additional eighty thousand to account for the rise in prices. Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, utilities, um how's it come up with solar? Very large demand, it's like their schools is making millions of dollars on solar roofing and we're not have any, so.
Uh that's a good question, we're currently in conversation with purchasing, we have a request for information out and we are waiting on responses. As soon as those responses are returned, we will begin to develop a request for proposal. And we'll be bringing that to your attention and for your consideration probably sometime during the summer.
Super, thank you, Mr. Snipes.
It's something we brought to the board um last year, but with the transition in the board, it was sort of put on delay because it was such a big decision. And at that time, we uh we provided a couple of vendors coming forward and the board felt that they really wanted to go through the R F P process. To make it a competitive process before moving forward with solar, but it's very much on our radar, and we do want to go there.
And the next area we're gonna share information about is health insurance, um Mr. Baker.
On this chart, you can see the historical rate increases for health insurance from twenty thirteen to the present. On average, the health, the has been slight, that increase has been slightly more than six percent. We're using an estimate of fifteen percent as we prepare for our health insurance renewal. And please know that we are currently going through a request for proposal process regarding healthcare. And more information will be forthcoming at future meetings. With our consultants presenting an overview on healthcare trends at the January twenty first meeting. Currently, the division is paying seventy six percent while the employee pays twenty four percent of the healthcare cost. As a reminder, not all employees participate in our healthcare program. One thousand three hundred and twenty eight of our one thousand nine hundred and seventy four eligible employees are participating, or sixty seven percent. That means that health insurance differs from a pay raise. If you give a pay raise, it impacts all employees and assists in their retirement. On this last slide, we continue with a possible fifteen percent increase and how different cost sharing scenarios would impact the budget. This slide shows various cost sharing scenarios for the health insurance increase between the employer and W J C C, I'm sorry, the employee and W J C C. For example, if we, if W J C C were to absorb fifty fifty percent of the fifteen percent increase. That would increase the budget two million and three thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. And we also show a sixty forty split, and we also show the seventy thirty split. And that budget impact. I'll hand it back over to CFO.
And currently, Mr. Baker, we're seventy thirty, correct?
Uh seventy six percent, I mean, is what it's.
But there are split with employee and W J C C of the increase last year was seven.
Yeah, thank you. All right, uh questions on this?
Are are we not done with healthcare?
We're done with healthcare, if you wanna pause for questions.
Questions on healthcare, thoughts?
Are we supposed to like give an opinion on where we want the ratio to go to? I think we talked about this last year, it was like.
So we need to have conversations about it, yeah.
We we will be bringing more information in future meetings.
I think philosophically, the the board does really have to weigh the cost of increases and and the cost of of healthcare. Because not every employee benefits from both. Um I know there's lots of various ways to look at that, none of them are correct, it there's just a perspective thing.
Where, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just asked, I know last year we, there was a discussion regarding the different healthcare companies. Or plans that we were going, looking at, is this. Related to that and and which company or plan does this relate to?
We're we're in the middle of the request for proposal, so they have not, we have not made a a final uh selection or recommendation. And we will eventually bring that to you on if it's a different plan.
Okay, and that would affect the total cost and the increase amount?
Right now, we're estimating it's gonna be fifteen percent for the budget, for budget purposes.
And I think, Mr. Hsing, the 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 challenge with that is everybody's going up. Regardless of who we might go to, there's going to be a significant increase. And we've asked our our vendor to come and speak with the board or consultant next uh budget meeting to really. Give you a sense of the landscape of of the increases in healthcare, Dr. Keever, I don't know if you've anything you want to to add to that?
No, I agree, we we tried to take what we currently spend in increases by fifteen percent to give the board. At least an idea out of the gate of what we think. What we anticipate, no matter who we go with, the cost to be.
This might have been what Mr. Hsing was referring to, I don't know. We were, last year, we were hoping that a number of employees would switch to. Versus that whatever the other one was that was very expensive. We 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 sort of went with the higher um portion that the division covered. To give employees sort of a runway, knowing that, okay, next year, we're not gonna probably probably be able to do this, so where are we on that?
If we move to a different provider, basically what we decided to do as a system to try to mitigate the costs. And to look at options for staff across the board. The R F P is has taken us out to look at everyone who was willing to come and offer a price to to. To provide health insurance for our staff, so we we may not, the plans may look very different depending on who the provider is. Does that make sense?
Not to me, I'm sorry, if I'm, I might be slow.
Right, right now, our 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 current healthcare model is through the local choice. Uh it's called T L C and and T L C provided, and there there are a number of different entities across the state that are members of T L C. I believe, as I've heard, Williamsburg James City County Schools is one of the largest members of that consortium. So we provide T L C plans, T L C provides us with plans. That we then turn around and share with our staff in terms of, here are options that you have. Last year, through the T L C plan, a Centerra offshoot was provided. And that Centerra, actually, two years ago, that Centerra offshoot was provided, and we tried to encourage some employees to take advantage of that. Looking at what their healthcare needs were and what the different premiums and and costs were. We saw an increase last year of employees signing on for the Centerra plan. So I think that's a net positive for the employee, there wasn't, there's not necessarily a net positive for the school division though. Because the amount that we're spending still remains at a certain level.
But last year, we were going to only fund the increase of the Centerra program because that only went up three percent. And versus a fifteen, and that's what we were trying to get people to switch to, so.
That's correct.
So we saw, we did see people switch towards the Centerra plan.
So the Centerra went up fifteen percent too?
Well, and we organizationally need to be really careful right now because we are, we are in the proprietary process of the R F P. Dialogue where we have looked at proposals from vendors from across the landscape with healthcare. And are trying to make a determination of what is the most fiscally appropriate and employee helpful. Healthcare coverage to provide, so.
So.
Probably should, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Provide additional information to the board about the process, but it's a, it's a fairly extensive committee of employees across the organization. That has been involved in the confidential R F P process to look at health insurance options.
Okay. Mrs. Sunday?
So what we don't want to happen, like people listening, we're not saying health and costs are going up fifteen percent, it's an S.
This is a placeholder. Right now, but the landscape is suggesting that across the board.
I remember um in previous um presentations, you all have showed what it was and then it came in under. And do we kind of have a trend so that. So that we know, like, that's kind of scary, because here we're doing say, uh. Cost savings in our opinion and then, and we're still going up fifteen percent, so don't want to get that scare tactic up there, but. It would be nice to know how our projections have been in the past.
There's actually a slide in the in the slide deck a a couple back that gave you a sense over the course of the last several years. What the actual increase was, so so last year. Percent in total, I believe we initially shared with the board during the first workshop in January. A range of what it might be ten to fifteen percent, so what what we're trying to do is to set the stage for. And I'm a little bit nervous to say worst case scenario right now because we're still going through that process, but we if. But putting the fifteen percent moniker in there, we feel like we're giving you the best sense of what healthcare may cost for the division. Right now, for next year. Hopefully, I hope we're answering your questions.
Go ahead.
Maybe I'm kind of getting it and you all aren't, but I'd like to talk about like maybe decreasing the ratio, um because we suggested that we would do that this year to potentially look at.
Well, that's why I was trying to understand where we were with switching people over to the. What was going to be cheaper option for us, I thought that was sort of the move, and now it sounds like that whole thing might be. Off the table because we might go in a completely different direction, is that what you're saying?
We may bring to the board a recommendation to um to reconsider the healthcare vendor. That is correct.
Which would encompass the Centerra plan that we had been discussing last year, the one we currently have encompasses that.
That is correct.
Yeah, you can say what you want about decreasing, I think we're we're, it's all hypothetical right now, but.
Yeah, um I mean, we we gave the opportunity to, and I'm not saying, well, time has passed, welcome to the the door closing, but. I was understanding like this is a large part of like, it's maybe talking about four hundred thousand dollars, but between the two sixty to seventy, right, but. I'm not suggesting we go down to the fifty fifty at all, I think it's kind of a bad move, I I would just be interested to see. Maybe to the projections, like we look at sixty, forty and seventy thirty, and the next time we see the budget stuff, um for the purpose, and I'm sure we will. Probably for all three of these, but um I really want to hear feedback from employees about that, and then we particularly saw as the wages. We talked about three percent going to like all of our employees, and like actually some. And like, actually, some people receive less money because be, even though we're keeping it seventy thirty, right? That was the whole discussion for us, we were actually having some internal budget stuff, like, we're not going to approve this if it doesn't, you know, like, include it in the right way. So, and I'm still somebody on that, I I want our employees to get the best benefits they can, but I understand that healthcare is not for every employee, right? So my balance would be like, alright, well, clearly you're not changing your healthcare plan at this point. Um, we've given some time to it, so I I'm feeling that way, I haven't heard anyone saying like, please give me, like, you know, like, I I understand. Like, I I want people actually to kind of talk to us, like, I like my healthcare the way it is, you know, I don't want any, I know it wants an increase, I get that. But I am moving towards like a sixty forty for the purpose of like budgetary needs, like, I need, we kind of need to bring up money. We're about to see a slide that's like eleven million dollars and ask in a minute. And and this is a big part, cause like not everyone takes healthcare, right? So like, that's for me as a board member, it's, I have to think about this, the support staff, we don't accept healthcare, there are people who, they reject it as full-time staff, right? So, I don't know, it's a balance here, I get it, um, I'm I'm leaning towards the slowly decline into sixty forty. Cause other divisions, I've actually looked into a little bit of this, like, no one really does it as high as we do, so I, gotta be honest, like, people get a lot more coming here. They get a lot, I think, a pretty high beacon school system, and then they also get kind of some pretty good benefits. I know it's like weird, cause I did criticize my former colleagues of maybe rolling back some of this stuff too far. Um, saying like, we're kind of left us this kind of problem of, like, now we get to do this. But I I I mean, the states have put a lot on our plate here, this year, and and this is a part where we're gonna increase wages in certain ways. And some people might actually get stuck with the kind of ability they probably deserved last year, but we kind of deferred that cost this year, so. That's, so anyway, that's, it's a long-winded answer of, I'd like to see a sixty forty, as like my like middle ground here, so. Um, and I I'm happy to defend it, cause I really, I really do wanna hear from our employees about that sector.
Sure, I'm sure we will be hearing.
Director, write to Randy Riffle.
Uh, Ms. Chen, did you have a question?
Uh, I did, I was just curious, um, yeah, I would be curious to, as a follow-up to what Mr. Riffle did. I'd be curious to find out um, the same thing, I'm sure that will be coming in our follow-up budget meetings. But my question right now, and and this can be a follow-up as well later. Um, as we consider whether we want to change the split or not, and just look at the different scenarios. Um, I I don't know, just to remain competitive, um, is that, is that, what is, I'd be curious now, what are the splits? Um, in other divisions, is that something that is known or shared?
Yeah, we have a general idea, not all plans are the same, but we do have a general idea about uh cost share splitting. I think we can, we provided that in previous years and can do it again.
I know it's probably not like an exact comparison, but it'd just be nice to have information, um, you know, cause if, we know. I I'm guessing we know what ours to be drastically different from our neighboring, you know, um, localities.
That was it.
So more, more to come, uh, stay tuned on he- on on health insurance, much more to come.
Okay, as we look at a summary of the expenditures that we've gone through this afternoon. The cost of a salary increase is approximately one point three million for each percentage increase. In the current biennial budget, there's a three percent salary increase at a cost of three point nine million. Increase cost for health insurance based on a fifteen percent overall increase. And the division covering seventy percent of that increased cost is approximately two point eight million. Essential increases in FTEs for teachers and counselors based on our target ratios is seven hundred twenty thousand. Mandatory increases in FTEs for English language learner teachers is nine hundred thousand. Mandatory increases in FTEs for special education teachers and aides is two hundred five thousand. FTEs transitioning from grants amount to eight hundred sixty four thousand. Increases to account for SRF-funded items in quarter one of fiscal year twenty five amount to two hundred thirty thousand. Contractual services increases amount to approximately six hundred sixty two thousand. And estimated increases for insurances, um, including workers' confidence and reliability is ninety nine thousand. The estimated amount for New Horizons is three hundred fifty eight thousand and utilities four hundred thousand. Bringing our total expenditure increases discussed this afternoon to approximately eleven point one million. These preliminary mandated and essential expenditure increases, again, amount to approximately eleven point one million. And the preliminary state revenue increase totals approximately two point four million. So with only those expenditure increases discussed this afternoon, we're looking at a shortfall of approximately eight point eight million. And as a reminder, this revenue only includes the anticipated increase in state revenue based on the governor's proposed budget amendments. As a point of reference, this chart represents our local revenue for the past ten years. Years with an asterisk indicate the first year of a biennium. Fiscal year nineteen has a higher increase, as that is the year that James Blair opened. So we've not factored that year into the average increase information that is presented. The percentage increase over these years, not including fiscal year nineteen, has ranged from a low of one point six percent to a high of five point four percent. With the average being two point nine percent. This chart shows what various locality increases would amount to, ranging from two and a half percent at two point seven million. To a five percent increase of five point four million over our fiscal year twenty five budget. Budget request to the localities of eight point eight million would be an increase of eight point two percent. And for comparison purposes, this chart shows for the past ten years, the percentage increase each year for both our local revenue. Represented by the red line and the state revenue represented by the blue line. For most years, our local revenue has been around two percent, with a few exceptions, most notably in fiscal year nineteen when James Blair opened. Again, this is a preliminary look at our state revenue based on the governor's proposed budget amendments to the current biennial budget. And this information may change in the coming weeks based on the General Assembly's actions. We have also only reviewed mandatory and essential cost increases this afternoon. There are other cost increases and potential savings that will be reviewed at the January twenty first budget work session. Upcoming dates in the budget process include a budget work session and pre-budget public hearing on January twenty first. Presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget on February eighteenth, a public hearing on March fourth. There will be a joint budget work session with our funding partners on March fourteenth. With anticipated board approval on March eighteenth in order to submit our budget requests to the localities by April first. And that concludes our presentation, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Mrs. Donner, go ahead.
Thank you so much for this very lengthy and thorough presentation. Um, regarding compensations, oh, early in the presentation, we talked about the the compensation study. And so if I'm understanding here, the only portion of that compensation study that this contemplates. Is the increase for the bus drivers and the compensation increase of the one point three million is a, is a three percent increase for everyone. But the places where we have identified that we need to differentially invest, that is not contemplated in these con- in these numbers.
That's correct.
So we'll be bringing information about that under recommendations from the study and the cost, potential cost of that. And getting some discussion at the next budget workshop and really determining over how many years it may take. To to fulfill everything from the actual study that we wish to pursue. I think one of the challenging things in this budget year is, it it's a big one. Um, but we've heard time and time again from our only partners, we want very high outcomes. There's very high expectations, results, you can't get that unless you invest heavily. And we've never really presented a budget of true need.
Right.
And so I think it's incumbent upon us to put it all out there, talk about everything that's really needed as an organization. And then we will certainly prioritize some of those things as well as we go through the process. So this is, this is part one, but there's still more to consider, more to, for for really supporting our schools. And 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 their success for students.
Just wanna ask, cause this doesn't incorporate, I think there were some words in here, there were seventy different requests, so that doesn't incorporate any of that. Or if we wanted to ex- do more for our um, expanding our like visions programs or any of those. Like, none of that is in here, this eleven million is basically the bare bones of what we have to do.
Yes, the mandatory positions are in, and and the essential positions to keep sustaining services as is. But there are more coming that really reflects some of the needs of schools. Like, we we need some positions to support our our discipline and student behavior at the elementary level. So you'll be considering those as well, and potentially some extra staff to help with special education and self-contained classrooms. So there's, there's other things coming that we've got to consider that are really needed at the school level. And which will really support teachers in doing their job.
Mr. Hussain?
Regarding the compensation, again, for the three percent increase, is that a mandatory increase or any place? Or is that just something that that we're looking at as a school division, that we're looking at to increase compensation?
This is actually in the governor's budget, so these are SOQ positions. So if we don't give that basic baseline three percent across the board, we'll probably leave money on the table. Um, so generally, when there's a a something in the governor's budget, we do that as a minimum. And anything we do, targeting strategically, certain positions is usually above that.
And the, and the three point nine is just the lo- locality portion of a three percent across the board?
Or does that? Now, the three point nine is the total cost.
Total, with the state funding for the SOQ positions.
Correct.
Each per- each percentage raise for all employees is one point three, so it's three point.
Right, but the state gives us a certain amount for a certain number of positions, so what we're, so is. Uh, do we need an additional three point nine from the locality so that we cover the rest of them?
That's everything, the cost to give a three percent for all of our employees is three point nine million.
Okay, how much of that is s- state funded then?
State compensation supplement.
I think it was on one of the first slides, um, that piece of it.
I'm just trying to.
I don't, I don't think I put the state amount.
So, we would subtract something from the three point nine.
With the governor's budget.
We have to add three point nine to our budget because that's how much the expense is.
She's looking for the answer.
Look, the delta, it's.
Yeah, to, the governor's budget adds two, adds two point three, and so there's a portion of that is towards salaries, but it's quite small. You have it in one of the, we'll get that for you.
I think it's in the next presentation, but the compensation supplement line is approximately two point six million, if I'm doing my math correctly.
Like, one point three.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, you're still doing the math, if you look at the slide, like, with the one that says revenue and explanatory summary. Like, it's, state revenue is two point three, and then the preliminary mandate is eleven, but now about eight point, rather, deficit of eight point seven. So you do the math right there, so.
Okay, I was just meaning specifically for the salaries.
So it sounds like we need nine million dollars.
Okay, yeah, that's a lot. Oh, Mrs. Donner, go ahead.
I believe slide twelve, which is what Mr. Riffle was saying, is that it says incentive programs is one point three eight five million.
That's correct.
So that, so that's where that would fall, so it's still like two and a half million short.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
For the three percent alone, yeah.
Questions or comments before we, oh, Mr. Riffle?
There's a place to give good news, maybe?
Alright, what's?
Come on, that was, that was an awesome presentation, so, I'm excited, I love talking to Ms. Yuen, um, and everyone doing their jobs here, it's so cool to see what we're up to. And what we need to do, um, I'm I'm doing my job, which is, um, I'm excited, cause I've gotten some people in general, somebody to agree. To um, some stuff to kind of cover, we've been experiencing a gap in funding for our capital approval project for the pre-k facilities. Um, and I wanna make it, like, they will be public documents in January twenty, so I'll I'll speak to this again on the twenty first meeting. Um, but we, we hopefully will be receiving a nine million dollar um budget amendment just for that project alone. From Senator McDougal, um, and Delegate Batten, in both the House and Senate budgets respectively. Um, so that's a kind of a plus for us, it's money that should potentially make it into both documents, um, from two somewhat senior members. And one's an appropriator from the Senate, so, then that next part for us is to to kind of ask for that money outright. Instead of trying to apply for them through grants, which we won't receive, I guarantee. The the governor's proposal for the two, I sent the two hundred ninety million dollar to our, they'll document, so like, he's proposing this. The General Assembly, of course, will ruin that and they'll probably decide how that money is allocated properly, properly, I don't know, whether you take it or not. But um, this is the best outcome for us, it's, it's really hard to apply for those grants for construction, um, we probably won't get it because our LCI is so high. So, that that's really the talking point for us, is like, if we can ask the, our local public to kind of support us in that action. Uh, this is probably the first time we've ever asked for it correctly to the state government, um, and there's a lot of doubters out there, so we're gonna prove them wrong. So, um, cause this is, this is important, this is, this is a program we've been talking about for twenty years. And if we can kind of cover nine million bucks, this is kind of like the shortfall, like, hey, we're trying to work on this together, you know, and this is kind of what we need now. And this is clearly not the whole need, but it really does take a chunk of money leaving our pockets from our local government and coming back to us. And helping support us in ways we haven't in the past, so, I'm excited for it, I think the, when I talk to them, the members in General Assembly, they're, they're excited to support this project. For the purpose of what I just said, it's, it is money leaving our constituents' pockets and not coming back because of certain systems that they created. And they they know that as members of the General Assembly, so, um, that's why they're supportive of it, they 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 wanna move forward on that, so. So thank you all for entrusting me with a little bit, I know it was kind of a hot and heavy kind of thing with Ms. Wall, so I wanna thank you, Ms. Wall, and people, I don't know who else. You looked at that document before I kind of maybe kind of tidied up and got it to the people who needed to, but, um, it's moving forward. And I'll, I'll give another update on the twenty first, but, yeah, it's, it's exciting, I I don't know, it's obviously funded, I've never done it for, I'm used to like, I work there. And it's like weird to do it for other people, but now I'm doing it for something I care about more, you know, so it's a little, like, there's the whole thing, like, don't fall in love with the bill. And I'm falling in love with the bill right now, so, you know, maybe someone's gonna pull me out, um, but it's exciting. Um, it's, cause it's something that really does matter a lot, and I think we can physically see this come to our, like, it's a, it's a building, it'll, it'll have, you know, a name, hopefully. We're delivering twins, the way I keep joking about, but it's exciting.
Well, thank you for your efforts on that, Mr. Riffle, we appreciate it, and that's good news.
Thank you.
Um, are we uh done with our work session, if there are no more questions or comments? Alright, and we will take a brief recess before we roll into. Yeah, before we roll into the. Post-session.
I think we have adjourned for this one, this is a special call.
Was it the budget retreat?
This is a rescheduled work session, so, does it need adjournment?
We have to. I'm sorry.
That's only agenda.
Oh, I see, okay.
I knew she would get there.
There's a lot of different meetings going on today.
I give her wait time, that's the teacher in me.
This budget work session is adjourned, okay.